"You are good, and in the evening I say you are good. You are good to me."
"Oh, you are good, you are good, Lord."
"You are good, and in the morning I say you are good." "In the evening I say you are good. You are good to me. You are good to me."
"Yes, you are."
"You are good to me."
"Oh, you're so good."
"You are good to me. You are good to me. You are good to me."
"Thank you, Jesus."
"You are good to me, Lord. You are good to me."
"Yes, you are."
"You are good to me. Oh, we thank you for your goodness, God." "Oh, you are good. Oh, you are good, Lord." "Oh, we thank you, Jesus. We thank you, Lord. You are good. You are good to me."
"Yes, you are."
"You are good to me. Yes, you are good to me. You are good to me. You are good to me. Oh, we thank you, Jesus. Oh, we thank you for your goodness, God. Oh, you are good, God. You're a good God. You're a good God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Oh, we thank you, Jesus. All my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. Oh, all my life, and all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I love your voice. You have led me through the fire. In darkest nights, you are close like no other. I've known you as a father. I've known you as a friend. And I have lived in the goodness of God. All my life, oh. And all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good, yes. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. Oh, yes, Lord, oh, yes. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. With my life laid down, I surrender now. I give you everything. 'Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me.
Running after me.
Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. With my life laid down, I surrender now. I give you everything. 'Cause your goodness is running after, it's running after me.
Yes, it is.
And I've seen the evidence of your goodness all over my life. All over my life. And I've seen your promises and fulfilling all over my life. All over my life. I've seen the evidence of your goodness all over my life.
Yes, Lord.
All over my life.
I've seen your promises all over my life.
I've seen your promises and fulfilling all over my life. All over my life. All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life.
All over my life, Lord. All over my life, God. All over my life. All over, Lord. I've seen the evidence, Lord. I've seen the evidence, Lord, of your goodness, of your grace, of your mercy. Oh, it's following me all my days, Lord. All over my life, yes. 'Cause all my life you have been faithful. And all my life you have been so, so good, yes, Lord. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God, yes. I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing. I will sing, Lord. I will sing of your goodness to me. I will sing of your goodness to me, Lord. 'Cause you have been faithful. 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 You have been faithful, Lord. You have been faithful. All my life you have been faithful. 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 And I will sing, and I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the faithfulness of God. I will sing of the mercies of God. Oh, I will sing of the goodness of God. Oh, goodness and mercy, Lord, oh, shall follow me all the days of my life. And I will dwell, and I will dwell in this house, Lord, forever and ever, Lord, giving you glory, giving you honor, speaking of your goodness, singing of your goodness, Lord. Oh, we thank you, Jesus. Oh, we thank you, Lord.
Father, we bless you today. Father, you have been so good to us. You have been so faithful. And we are so thankful. We're so grateful, Lord, for your faithfulness. We're so grateful, Lord, for your mercy. We're so grateful, Lord, for your favor on our life. Father, we honor you. And Lord, as we look back on our life, even where we are right now, we can see your faithfulness. We can see your hand upon our life. We can see your presence in situations that looked impossible to get through. But Lord, because of your faithfulness and our faith in you, trusting in you, Lord, you have brought us through time and time again. And as we look back on our life, Father, we can see that you have been faithful. So faithful, so committed to us, so merciful, so graceful. And we're honored. We're honored, Lord. We're honored by you. You have honored us. And Lord, we've come to honor you tonight. And we thank you, Lord, for your goodness. God is a good God. How many y'all could look back on your life and say, "God has been good to me? He's been good to me? He's been good to me?" How many y'all can look back on your life and say, "God's never left me? He's never left me? He's never forsaken me? He's always been there for me? He always will be there for you because he loves you. He's committed to you." I don't know that people fully understand that. God is committed to you. He's committed. He's your father. And he's committed to you. And he loves you. And I'll tell you, he has been so faithful. And I am so grateful for his faithfulness. He's been faithful to me, even when I wasn't faithful to him. How many y'all can say that? There's some times in your life, maybe you weren't following as close as you should have been following. Maybe you weren't doing some things you should have been doing. But you know, God never left you. Even when I, even when in my own life, I went away from the Lord when I was younger for several years. And even sitting in a bar, I still sensed God's presence. Not like feeling it, but I just knew he was still there. And the convicting power of the Holy Ghost was on me in a bar. I couldn't get away from him. And I'm grateful. But he was patient with me and very merciful to me, just like he's been merciful to you and patient with you. Such a wonderful Father. Amen. I'm grateful tonight. How about you? How many y'all know without God, your life would look a whole lot different right now? It would look a whole lot different. Amen. Well, praise the Lord. Well, I believe you can be seated for just a moment in the presence of the Lord. We're grateful tonight. I don't want to take up a lot of time. I just want to go ahead and receive the offering for tonight so that we can get Pastor Debbie up here and see what the Holy Ghost has for us. Amen. Praise the Lord. So let's go ahead and lift your, if you're giving by cash, please lift your hand. The ushers are in the aisle and they'll serve you. You know, I teach you, we all know how to give. Amen. And so we give with our heart and we give because we love God. We love the work of God. And we appreciate what God's doing in our life. And we're sowing not only seed, but we're sowing honor. How many y'all know? Don't ever forget that. You're not just putting money in a bucket. You're sowing honor. And the way you sow honor is with words. Please don't give an offering tonight without words, without worship, without saying something, even if it's just, "Father, thank you. Thank you, Lord, for being so good to me." Amen. You may be sitting here thinking, "Yeah, but I got bills and I got this and I got that." But you know what? God is good. And God will see you through. Amen. Praise the Lord. Especially in lean times. Amen. And I'll tell you, you just keep your giving straight. Stay on the giving side of life. And you're gonna be all right. Remember when I said this morning, it's just a season. And this season will change too. You know, I'm reminded with, what's his name in Mexico, honey? Wayne Meyer said it. It just always have stayed with me. He said, a great missionary there. He's 100 years old now. And you know, we had Terry Myers here and that's his spiritual father. But he made this statement. I've never forgotten it. He said, "When you give because you can't help it, you'll receive because you can't stop it." I mean, think about that. It's just your heart to give. And that heart comes from God. A giving heart comes from God. Amen. He's a giver. Amen. I'm a giver. How about you? Are you a giver? We're givers. Amen. So we want to sow honor tonight. And if you're making a checkout, make it out to Church on the Rock. You can put in the memo for Pastor Debbie and we'll see to it that she receives all that when she leaves on Wednesday morning. If you're giving electronically, you just put on the screen there. Just follow the instructions. Amen. Hold your offering in your hand. Father, we're so grateful tonight for all that you're doing in this place. We're so thankful for your presence, so thankful for your tenderness, your tender mercies. We're so grateful. Father, we're so thankful that you're visiting us in this hour. And Lord, we're so grateful for Pastor Debbie and the ministry that she's bringing to us. And so, Father, we sow an offering tonight because we love her. We love her family. We love the ministry. And so, Father, we sow this with honor. And we say, "Father, we thank you for being so good to us and that we're able to share, to share with others and to share with those who teach us in all good things." And so, Father, we sow this offering tonight in faith. And we thank you for it in the mighty name of Jesus. And everybody said, "Amen." Please stand up with me if you would.
"Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. There's just something about thy name. Master, Savior, Jesus. Like the fragrance after the rain. Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. Let all heaven and earth proclaim that kings and kingdoms shall all pass away. But there's something about thy name. Oh, Jesus, 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 Jesus. There's just something about thy name. Master, Savior, Jesus. Like the fragrance after the rain. Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. Let all heaven and earth proclaim that kings and kingdoms shall all pass away. But there's something about thy name. But there's something about thy name. There's just something about thy name."
Thank you, Father. Well, hallelujah. It's my honor to have Pastor Debbie back tonight. We're looking forward to all that God has for us. Amen. Let's thank the Lord as Pastor Debbie comes tonight.
Amen. Heavenly Father, once again, as an act of our will, we yield ourselves to what you want to take place tonight here in this place, Father. There's the highest and the best for every service. And so, that's what we desire. So we say, "Father, we're yielded to you." And Father, we're thankful that the Holy Spirit helps us so that you may have your way in this place. And we give you glory and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen. You may be seated in the presence of the Lord. You know, the season that we were in with our church, I think I may have talked a little bit of it, maybe privately. But I don't know that I've ever taken a lot of time in a service to share some of the testimonies of things that happened. But really, the Lord prompted me to do that this morning. And I'm gonna do a little bit more of that tonight because when we have a time like this where God is, it's evident that something is happening. It's evident. People are not drawn to come to service every night without the power of God moving them. I mean, it's just evident. But you know, there's something, there's a purpose for the anointing. And so, in seasons like this, we've got to be, become more skillful at yielding to the Spirit, being sensitive to follow the leading of the Spirit. And you know, that's nothing new for us because we have been trained to yield to the Spirit. Dr. DeFrain, Pastor Nancy, told us, "Respond. Respond. When the Spirit is prompting you, respond." And the more you do, the more accurate you'll get. You know, sometimes in the early days when I believed that God told me to do something, you know, he may not have. I may have missed it. But at least I did it believing that he wanted me to do it. And I mean, and I'm not talking about doing something bad or something weird. Just, you know, I would feel impressed upon my heart to do something and I did it. But the more that I did it, the more that I yield to it, the more I could more accurately discern when the Spirit was prompting me. Because the Father knew I was ready to yield. And that's what's important. We practice, or we should be practicing yielding all the time. We yield when the Spirit of God, you know, unctioned us or arrests us to go and spend time with Him or to pray or to study our Word. Or how about to give? Or how about to give to somebody that just came up in prayer? You know, God speaks and says, "I want you to do this for that person." So we have, should be practiced at yielding so it won't be difficult in a time like this to follow the leading of the Spirit. We didn't have that when we were having a time with God, a move of God. It was, we were really not as skillful at yielding. So we were so cautious in every service. And we didn't want to publicize it because it was an intimate time with Him that we felt was for us, for our congregation. Now, we didn't mind people coming. But you know, when people, you know, hear that you have extended services, there are people that'll come just out of curiosity. But if they're not sincere to yield, they really won't get anything. We had ministers that were in our city that somehow heard we were having extended services and they would come for one night and never come back. And that was kind of sad because they just came to see what was happening, not participate in what God was doing. We have to come with a heart ready to participate. And really, it was our congregation that was participating. Now, other people got ministered too because of that, outside our church. You don't know that in this time, you know, there'd be a coworker that God prompts you to speak to them or to pray for them or to do something that's out of the ordinary that you would do because you've been in His presence so long. We get keener at hearing. And you understand that the anointing assists us. It helps us. When there's a drawing to come, you just override your flesh. You just don't get tired. You don't feel tired. You should be tired. Literally, we started having services in March and we did not end until November. You think about that. And only maybe two-thirds of the way through did we start taking Saturday off. And we did that just because, you know, people were having a hard time getting other things done. And so, it was just kind of logistics. But one day, and the rest of the time, we were in God's presence and people were being touched that had never been touched before. They could not say that they hadn't come in contact with the power of God, that they knew themselves. I remember there were different times in the service and my husband and I, we alternated. Whoever we felt, you know, had the lead that night, we just went by the Spirit because we wanted to be led by the Spirit. It wasn't like, you know, you do Monday, I'll do Tuesday. No, we'd just get out there and, you know, "Have anything? You have anything?" We were just learning how to do this. There was a staff member. And she was driving to church and she had a small child in the back, her daughter. And she had, they had been, they both had been coming night after night, night after night, months now. And she's getting ready to turn onto the street where our church is at and her husband was already at the church. And she looks in the rearview mirror and the baby is in the car seat. But the baby somehow got a hold of a coin and it put it in her mouth. And she heard the baby coughing and she's looking in the rearview mirror and she's seeing her baby choking. She turned the corner and of course, you know, now she's driving mostly rearview mirror. You know, you look and you're looking in the mirror. You look and she turned and she was gonna turn in the parking lot and then she said, "No." She said, "Lord, I did not come to church this many nights to get into your presence to watch my daughter choke in the back on a coin." The hospital was across the tracks. So it was a street over. Instead of turning into the parking lot, she kept going. But she said, "When I got into the parking lot of the hospital, I looked in the rearview mirror and it's almost as if someone hit my daughter in the back because the coin flung out of her mouth." Think about that. She said, "I did not. I did not come to honor you this many nights to see this happen, right in the middle of this. We had such phenomenal things happen. I'm talking to you tonight about yielding. Go with the Spirit as far as He wants to go. Yield to Him. And your pastor will know. He'll know by the Spirit what to do. But listen, stay hooked on because you just don't know what the Spirit would do. But we know that the anointing is here for a particular thing. We had a prayer line. And when I got up to this one particular girl, all of a sudden, I sensed like the anointing came down almost in a shaft. And before I got up to her, she began to shake under the power of God and she went out all by herself. And I realized something is happening in this spot. So we had them lined up, but I directed the ushers. I said, no, one by one, have them stand right there. And one by one, the whole congregation, when they stepped into that spot, there was a manifestation of the anointing that was in a degree that they had not experienced before. And different things happened. Some of them just shook under the power of God. And there were people that really didn't know anything about church. And you would think, you know, just, you know, someone that doesn't know, they're just going to step in, they're going to look around, then they're going to go because they don't know anything. No, those people were touched the most. Such a phenomenal time. But I believe that it went as long as it did because we didn't, we weren't trying to do something to impress anybody else. We didn't want man's hands on it. We didn't put, you know, an article in the newspaper and say, we've been going to church for so many nights. Come on and join us. And of course, we didn't have social media back then, not to my knowledge in 97. You know what I mean? Not like how prevalent it is now. It's a tool now, but we didn't have it back then. So it was just about us coming and enjoying what the Spirit of God was blessing us with. But lives were touched because we yielded. You know, the Bible says that Jesus, He yielded up His life for us. On the cross, it said that He cried out and then He yielded up. He cooperated with the Spirit. And this is what we're here to do, to cooperate with the Spirit, being yielded, yielded in worship, yielded in prayer. You know, Dr. DeFrain, the last week that he, the last conference that he did, a full week, he did at our church before he exited. And on a Wednesday night, he walked in there and we began to worship God. And you could tell that the anointing was stronger than, you know, it was, it was strong every night, but it was stronger that night. And I remember I had my eyes closed and I was worshiping God and we had already turned over the platform to Him, but He let the worshippers go on. And so I remember I had my eyes closed and I had this urge to just get down on my knees. And that wasn't, you know, like a common thing. You know what I mean? In Dr. Frain meeting, you know, he's about ready to take the... But all of a sudden, I just had this sense, get on your knees. And when I opened my eyes to get down on my knees, everybody was down. And Dr. DeFrain was down behind the pulpit. And it was, there was a holy hush. I believe the music stopped. And when he got up, he said, Jesus is in here and I've never done this before, but He's got something for every one of you. And He told me to lay my hands on you so that you could receive what you needed for the future on a Wednesday night. But I remember in my head going, why do I have this sensation to kneel? But I remember thinking, it was so, so large in me that I just thought, well, you know, I mean, I opened my eyes so that I would, you know, kneel modestly, you know, you're a woman, you know, let me get down there, you know, politely. But I thought everybody else was standing up. But they weren't because everyone else sensed the same thing. Think about that. Think about how, you know, just how marvelous the Holy Spirit is that at one moment, He could impress upon all of us to do the same thing. And we were getting ready to receive an impartation from the Man of God, not knowing that it really about, not even a week later, we wouldn't see Him again on this side. We'll see Him on the other side, but we weren't going to see Him on this side. But I'll never forget how, and everyone talked about it. They said, you know, I'm standing there and I'm thinking, I need to kneel. Yeah, but I don't want to look weird. I mean, you know, everybody was processing in their brain what the Spirit was instructing them to do. Thank God that they did it. But here's what we need to do. We need to be ready to yield to the Spirit so that we can cooperate with Him. That's what will be important in this time when that one young lady that I prayed for, and I just stood in front of her and she began to shake under the power and I saw, and it's like I knew there's something right here in this, in this, like a shaft, it was like a circle. And everyone that came in, they stood in. It's like, I had never experienced that before, but all of a sudden, I just knew what to do. It's amazing when the level of anointing increases, we just know what to do. Now, I want to say this. There are some things that happen. And you know, God isn't going to make you do anything. And you have to understand that. We either yield to Him or we don't. But God provides us with everything that we need. And in this time, there were people that, that they got instructions. Some of them followed through, some of them didn't. The presence of God is not going to make you do anything. And you need to understand that. The presence of God is not going to make you. The presence of God will assist you to do it. But the presence of God will not make you do anything. And this one particular night, when the Spirit of God instructed us to come to the front and to pray, there were two young men. When we got up and we were going to get back to our seats, there were two young men that really like fell into a trance. And one of them, when he came out, and when he came out, he was like, I mean, blubbering. First of all, the ushers tried to move him. Pastor Johnny had the service and the ushers were going to try to, you know, assist them, assist them in moving. They couldn't. They were dead weight. And they had been there a while. And so when they finally got them over and this one young man that told us the testimony, he said, the minute that Pastor instructed us to pray and I went to the front and I got on my knees, he said, I heard like an elevator shaft and I started going up. And he said, it was like, it was going like a speed that I had never gone before. That's what it sounded like with like, almost like lights flashing. And then all of a sudden, he saw himself as a young man before he was ever saved. And God said, I saw you then. I knew you and I called you. Then he said, the scene changed and he saw himself, the second time he saw himself in his eighties. The second scene, he says, I'm sitting behind a desk. I can see my knees. I can see a picture of my family. I can see three children, two boys and a girl. And I'm an old man now and I know that I have lived for God and my family has served God. That's the second scene. The third scene, he said, it looked like our whole church was on a platform. And really, that would have been maybe a hundred and some people. It's like our whole church was on a platform, but we were ministering to like a sea of people. He said, and then I heard the Lord say, tell them, I'm coming back quick like a thief in the night. He said, tell them. Tell them. And then he said, he came back. What a tremendous experience. The sad part about it is, we have, we have the ability to yield or not yield. And He did not yield to the plan of God. And God showed him three timeframes in His life, but he did not yield. Two years later, he backslid. And I don't know if he has anything to do with God, but let me tell you something, this was real. And God was graciously, he was, there was an anointing on His life. And He told him exactly what He had called him to do. He knew him. He was trying to tell him, listen, son, when you were a boy wondering what your life was about, I already had a plan and I've called you. And God's plan was for him to live His life and fulfill His call and to see His family serving God. He showed him that. He said, I knew I was in heaven when I was seeing these things. And the third scene, he said, I saw what our church was to effect. That was how far-reaching we were to effect. And he said, I knew that by that picture. But he didn't yield. And so that, that God showed him was not fulfilled. Everything that God has for us, it's not going to happen automatically. We need to understand that. So it's important that when the Spirit of God is here in such a way to assist us, it's important that we're mindful of that and that we don't minimize it. And whatever God tells us, whatever God instructs us to do, we need to carry that in our heart and we need to, you know, continue to, we need to continue in it. The enemy came hard at this young man. But God had already told him, I have a plan for you. But it was about him yielding. So even though we had, he had this magnificent experience that you think would seal his life, he didn't. We have choices to make. When God shows us something or when He causes us to implement something in our life or He gives us a direction, He sees the end of it and the end is good, but it's up to us to yield ourselves and walk it out. And I really feel like it's important for you to understand that because sometimes people think that when the power of God comes in such a manifestation, that things are going to happen automatically. No, the power of God here is to assist us to get the job done, but it's still going to take us to yield to it and to recognize what God is doing. What a time of fellowship. I mean, we could just get lost in the presence of God during worship. And I really believe that that's, that's one of the key things because, you know, the ushers in the presence of God is that worship. And we're doing it here with sincere hearts. But understand what God and what the Holy Spirit reveals to you, what God speaks to you. You have to be yielded to see the fullness of it. The power of God is not going to do it for you. Now, we know that because we've been taught the Word, but when we begin to get into times like this, we still have to cooperate. That's what's so important, that we cooperate. Like I said, when I knew it was coming, I realized something is happening here. And so whatever I had in my heart that would have been good, all of a sudden, it just didn't seem like the anointing was there. So I spent some time and then the Lord said, I want you to tell them of some of the things that took place. I want you to tell them what I taught you and how you have more of an advantage because you're solid on the Word. The Word is always your foundation for anything. And when we've got the Word, we can cooperate and sustain things longer because we've got the Word. I regret not having more revelation so I could have been a better assist to this young man that God was endeavoring to rescue by showing him the end of his life if he followed the plan of God. God has a plan that He's already walked out. It's finished. But you have to stay with Him and continue on in it. And you understand, no matter what the enemy tries to throw at you, that is no reason not to continue to follow God because He's got an end and the end is good. One thing I understood by that is that he was afraid that he wouldn't fulfill the plan of God because he was so emotionally taken when he saw the scene where he said, I saw my legs, I saw myself behind a desk and I knew that I was in my eighties and I had lived for God. And he was so grateful that he had lived for God. Why? Because the devil was tormenting him, telling him he was not going to fulfill the plan of God. Had we been more skillful, had we had more word level, we could have been an assist. That's why when we have these messages that are taught about the mind and all of this, sometimes people take it for granted because you may not have known anyone that is absolutely did not fulfill the plan of God because they didn't know what your pastor's teaching. They didn't know that torment in the mind was not their desire to do wrong. But it was the enemy trying to stop them from fulfilling the plan of God. And how, I wish that we would have been more skillful. But one thing that I learned, that powerful presence was not going to override a person's will. Always remember that. It's not going to override your will. That's why it's so important that your minds continue to stay renewed and that we continue to stay on the Word and enjoy what the Spirit of God is doing. But remember, we have to yield to cooperate with Him, myself included. I don't want to talk or minister the Word for an hour or forty minutes because I believe God has something more He wants to do in worship, in His presence. This is what He told me to bring you and this is what I'm going to do. I don't believe the service is over yet, but I believe that we need to let Him have His way. I had a part and I brought it. But He still wants to do something. Let's yield to Him in worship. Let's yield to Him, Pastor. You have to do anything.
Yes, you are, Jesus. You are worthy of it all. For you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. You're worthy of it all. You are worthy of it all. All of the praise, all of the honor, Lord. You are worthy of it all. Because I've seen it in my whole life, Lord. For you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. You are worthy of it all. You are worthy of it all. And we bring the highest praise. You are worthy of it all. You have done great things. For you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. For you have, Lord. For you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. Oh, we bring all the glory, all of the honor to you, Lord. For you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. We bow before you, King Jesus. For you have, for you have done great things. And with this song I sing, you deserve the glory. I exalt. And I exalt thee. I exalt thee. I exalt thee. Oh, we exalt you, Lord. And I exalt thee. Oh, Lord. I exalt thee. As I exalt you. I exalt thee. Oh, Lord. We've come to honor you. We've come to give you glory. We've come to magnify and bless your holy name. We've come to honor you. We've come to give you glory. We've come to magnify and bless your holy name. Oh, we have come, we've come to honor you. We've come to give you glory. We've come to magnify and bless your holy name. With all of our hearts, we've come to honor you. Yes, we have. We've come to give you glory. We've come to magnify and bless your holy name. We've come to magnify and bless your holy name. We magnify you. We magnify you. Oh, my King. Yes, my King. Oh, my King, Jesus, Savior. Oh, we magnify you. Oh, we magnify you. Oh, we honor your presence. There's nothing like your presence. Nothing like your presence, Jesus. Oh, nothing like you. There's nothing like your presence, Jesus. Oh, nothing like your presence. Oh, nothing else will do. Nothing like your presence, Jesus. Oh, nothing else will do. Nothing compares to your presence. Oh, your presence is what we hunger for. 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 Nothing else will do. Thank you, Jesus. Oh, nothing else will do. Your presence is what we hunger for. All you are, all we need is your presence. All we need is your presence, Jesus. Oh, your presence, Jesus. All we need is your presence. Yes, we do. All we want is your presence. Yes, we do. All we hunger for is your presence. Oh, we want you. Thank you for your presence. Oh, we hunger for your presence. Oh, we're hungry for your presence, Jesus. Oh, we're hungry for your presence, Jesus. All we want is you. Oh, and I love your presence, Jesus. I love your presence. Oh, I love your presence. It's all about you. Yes, I love your presence. I love your presence. Yes, I love your presence. Because it's all about you. Oh, I love your presence. Yes, I love your presence. Yes, I love your presence. Because it's all about you. Oh, all about you, Jesus. Oh, it's all about you, Jesus. All about your presence, Jesus. All about your presence, Lord. It's all in your presence, Lord. Oh, your presence. Everything that we need, we find it in your presence, Jesus. All you've provided, we yield to your presence. All you want to do, we yield to your presence. How you want to move in this place, Father, we yield to your presence, Lord. We open our hearts and say yes to the King of glory. We open our hearts and say yes to the healer of all disease. We open our hearts and we say yes to the deliverer, oh, the great redeemer. We open our hearts and we yield to your presence, Lord. Because there is nothing like the presence of the Lord. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. No, there's nothing like it. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. And as we seek, as we seek your face, you are here in this place. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. Oh, there's nothing like, there is nothing like the presence of the Lord. Oh, we thank you for your presence. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. Nothing compares to you, God. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. Oh, I love it here in your presence. Because there is nothing like the presence of the Lord. And as we seek, as we seek your face, you are here in this place. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. No, there's nothing like it. There is nothing like the presence of the Lord. The presence of the Lord We worship you Yes, we worship you Here in your presence, Lord
Hallelujah, Jesus
We glorify We magnify We honor We glorify We magnify
All the glory
We glorify
All the honor
We magnify King of kings We worship you
All the honor
We worship
All the glory All belongs to you All belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory Belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor
And we give you praise And all of the honor You are our God The one we live for We give you praise And all of the glory, God And we give you praise And all of the honor You are our God The one we live for We give you praise And all of the glory, God Yes, all of the glory You're worthy of it all, Lord Yes, all of the glory Oh, all the praise Oh, yes, all of the glory And all of the glory All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you Yes, all of the praise And all of the honor All of the glory It belongs to you All of the praise And all of the honor Thank you, Jesus You're worthy to be praised Yes, you're worthy to be praised We are reverent Before your presence, Lord Oh, Lord
When the glory's in the room Nothing else is needed When the glory's in this room Nothing else is needed When the glory's in this room Nothing else is needed It's just you, Jesus When your glory's in this room Nothing else is needed When your glory's in this room Nothing else is needed When your glory's in this room Nothing else is needed It's just you, Jesus It's just you Oh, it's just you It's just you It's just you, God Oh, that we yield to you Oh When your glory's in this room Oh, nothing else is needed When your glory's in this room No, nothing else is needed When your glory's in this room Nothing else is needed It's just you Oh, it's just you Our eyes are on you Our eyes are fixed on you Our eyes are set on you Oh, 'cause nothing else will do Oh, nothing else will do No, nothing else will do No, nothing else will do We just want you No, nothing else will do No, nothing else will do No, nothing else will do We just want you It's so easy to worship You're so easy to praise You're so easy to worship You're so easy to praise You're so easy to worship You're so easy to praise You're so easy to worship You're so easy to praise You're so easy to worship Oh, it's easy to worship you It's easy to give you praise Oh, in your presence It's so easy to worship It's so easy to worship You're so easy to worship Oh, as we bless your name Oh, it's easy to worship you You're so easy to worship, Jesus You're so easy to worship And give praise Oh I lift my hands To bless your name I give my all To bring you praise I lift my hands To bless your name I give you worship All of my days, oh I lift my hands To give you praise I lift my voice To bless your name I lift my hands To give you praise I lift my voice To bless your name I lift my hands To give you praise I lift my voice To bless your name I lift my hands To give you praise I lift my voice To bless your name 'Cause it's easy to worship It's easy to praise It's easy to worship Oh, and bless your name You're easy to worship You're easy to praise You're easy to worship Lord, I Lord, I bless your name I bless you 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 Oh And I will exalt you 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 I will exalt you
Hallelujah, Father, we bless you Let's just keep worshiping the Lord Just open your heart to Him Worship Him Tell Him how much you love Him And if you're here And you're not right with God Pour your heart out to Him And He'll meet you right where you are He'll change your life He'll change your life If you'll open your heart Just like Pastor Debbie taught us You've got to cooperate with the Spirit And say, "Father, I repent Father, I'm coming back With all of my heart And I ask you to forgive me And cleanse me with your precious blood And I commit myself to you To live for you All the days of my life And I honor you and bless you Worship you and give you praise For you've been so good Thank you, Jesus Thank you, Jesus Thank you for your love, Father Thank you for what you're doing in our lives, Lord Thank you, Father, for ministering here For touching and changing Ministering to us as we minister to you Father, we love you Father, we honor you So important what Pastor Debbie said About cooperating with the Spirit And opening your heart To Him It's not about works It's not about you being good enough This is about the blood of Jesus Jesus shed for you So that you could Be born again and you can Have a brand-new spirit And that God would walk with you And be your God And be your Savior And if you've been away from the Lord You didn't lose your salvation Just repent And come back to Him with all your heart It's not about works Jesus did all the works for us It's about cooperating with Him Worshiping Him Honoring Him Hallelujah I think there's a little bit more there You have, Ms. Rebecca And as we worship the Lord For just a little bit more I want you to open your heart to Him If you're not right with Him You can get right Right now You don't lead me to lead you in a prayer Just need to drop to your knees and say, "God, I need help Thank you for helping me Thank you for helping me Thank you for helping me I give you my life I give you everything that I am Take over my life And make it what you want me to be" So let's just worship the Lord For just a little bit longer He's your healer He's your deliverer Hallelujah He's your Savior And He loves you Amen? Just a little bit more, Rebecca
All to Jesus I surrender All to Him I freely give I will ever love And trust in His presence daily And all to Jesus I surrender All to Him I freely give I will ever love And trust in His presence daily And I surrender And I surrender all. Oh, I surrender all. Oh, to Thee, my blessed Savior, I surrender all. Oh, to you, oh, I surrender all. Yes, it do. Oh, I surrender all. Oh, to Thee, my blessed Savior, I surrender all. Lord, to Thee. And oh, to Thee, my blessed Savior, I surrender all. In your presence, I will daily live. In your presence, I will daily live as I surrender my all to you. In your presence, I will daily live. In your presence, I will daily live. In your presence, Lord, I will daily live as I surrender, Lord. And oh, to Thee, my blessed Savior, I surrender all.
Thank you, Father, Savior.
Lord, I love you. And Lord, I love you. Lord, I love you. Lord, I love you. Lord, I love you. Oh, yes. Lord, I love you. Oh, Lord, I love you. Lord, I love you. Lord, I love you.
Thank you, Jesus. Father, we honor you and give you praise in this place tonight. We honor your presence and we thank you, Lord, for your goodness and your presence in this place and in our lives tonight. Thank you, Father.